This time I call to order a work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, June the 28th, 2022, at 6 o'clock PM at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. We note for the record that we have a quorum consisting of all five commissioners present for tonight's work session. At this time, we're going to have an invocation given by Commissioner Foster. Afterward, please remain standing and join us in the pledge. Please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us the ability to come here, Lord, and do what we do as a county and make things better for our citizens, Lord. Please, Lord, let us make the best decisions tonight that we talk about. And in your name, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Commissioners, at this time is there a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda? We need to amend the agenda and add two items. We need to add item H, UGA Cooperative Extension Contract, and we need to add item I, the Indigent Defense Agreement. These two came in kind of at the last minute, but they are of a timely nature that we need to take care of tonight. So is there a motion that we approve tonight's meeting agenda as amended?
I make a motion that we approve tonight's meeting agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Westers made the motion to approve the agenda with those two amended items. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with the two items H and I added, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and the tonight's agenda is approved as amended. This time, we're going to open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern that they would like to address to the board. This is a comment section only, and we won't take questions. If you have questions, we're going to ask you to submit those in writing at the end of the meeting, and someone will contact you in a few days and try to answer your questions. When you come up for comment, please begin by giving your name and address. In order to facilitate the meeting and allow everyone the opportunity to speak, each person must limit their comments to five minutes or less. Each person may only speak once, and you may not yield unused time to another person. A timer will be visible so that you can adjust your remarks. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of the quorum as Commissioners, and this includes being civil and respectful and avoiding personal attacks. Members of the public may not interrupt while someone else is speaking. Civility is very important, and while we recognize everyone's right to speak at a public meeting, the public comment section will not be used as a forum to disparage others or make discriminatory comments against individuals or groups. Such conduct is a disruption of our meeting, and any individual who does so or violates otherwise the rules of the quorum will be asked to sit down or leave the room. When you come up to give public comment, you must come to the podium and face the board. All comments should be addressed to the chair, and those speaking may not turn to face the crowd. We're going to ask each person to respect the five-minute time limit. We will enforce that stricter. Please don't interrupt when others are speaking or carry on side conversations. It's very important that everyone has the opportunity to speak and that everyone can hear what is being said. So this time, if you'd like to make a public comment, if you raise your hand, we'll have you come up one at a time. Anyone? Anyone wish to make a public comment? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item agenda, and it's 5A, Executive Session. This time, is there a motion to close the regular session and enter into executive session to discuss real estate, litigation, and personnel?
I'll move to close the regular session and enter into executive session to discuss real estate, litigation, and personnel.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foster's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Westers made seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to close regular session and enter into executive session to discuss real estate, litigation, and personnel, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and we're going to close the meeting. At this time, we're going to ask everyone to step out either into the lobby or outside the building. The meeting is not over, and as soon as executive session is over, we will come back and have everybody come back in. Thank you. At this time, we're going to vote on entering back into regular session at 7:19 PM. So this time, is there a motion to close executive session, re-enter regular session, approve the minutes of executive session, and authorize the chair to sign an affidavit that the board held in executive session and only discussed real estate, litigation, and personnel?
I make a motion that we move to close executive session, re-enter regular session, approve the minutes of executive session, and authorize the chair to sign an affidavit that the board held in executive session and only discussed real estate, litigation, and personnel, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Westers made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Franklin, second to the motion. All in favor of the motion to close executive session, re-enter regular session, approve the minutes of executive session, authorize the chair to sign an affidavit that the board held in executive session, and only discussed real estate, litigation, and personnel, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and we re-enter regular session. Commissioners, at this time is there a motion to authorize the county manager to transfer funds in the amount of $930,300 to the Industrial Building Authority utilizing SPOLOST-5 funds and general funds to the extent necessary?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foster's made the motion to authorize the county manager to transfer funds in the amount of $930,300 to the Industrial Building Authority utilizing SPOLOST-5 funds and general funds to the extent necessary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Franklin, second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to authorize the county manager to transfer funds in the amount of $930,300 to the Industrial Building Authority utilizing SPOLOST-5 funds and the general funds to the extent necessary, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and the county manager is authorized to make that transfer with the minutes so reflect this transfer authorization. The next item on the agenda is the county manager contract. The board has conducted a mid-year evaluation of our county manager and renegotiated some of the terms of Mr. Turner's employment contract. The proposed contract addendum includes provisions for a 2.5% increase in the current base salary, an increase in his monthly vehicle allowance to $500 per month, an extension of his current contract period to end on December the 31st, 2025, and an increase in severance payment equal to eight-month salary. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the contract addendum for the county manager?
Make a motion that we approve the contract addendum for the county manager.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wells has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Westers, second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the contract addendum for the county manager, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and the contract addendum for the county manager is approved. The next item on the agenda is 5C, Sale of Tax Deed Parcel. The county has been asked to dispose of a piece of property that's owned by the county by virtue of a tax sale, and this would require the board to authorize the transaction. So I'm asking Mr. Turner to give us the details on this.
I'm going to transfer that over to the board.
Okay.
So this is a parcel of property that the county, and from time to time, the county line up with ownership of parcels after a tax sale. And this is one of them that adjoins, it's a small irregular parcel that adjoins somebody's land, and they would like to acquire it. They can't just come acquire it from the county. The county has to authorize the sale of it, and then the law requires that that sale is done through an advertisement and the receipt of sealed bids. And so the issue before you is whether to authorize the sale of the property through sealed bids.
What is the property? Do we have an address or a tax parcel?
Tax parcel ID is 0618273. Address is South Brooklyn Harbor Drive in Gumblog.
What's the size of that? Do you know how big it is?
I don't recall that.
Is it just like a residential, piece of residential property?
That's right.
Okay. Do you guys?
Point two, I think it's point two.
Point two?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Turner or Mr. Sandals?
No.
Okay. Mr. Sandals has advised that if the board approves, we have to advertise the property for sale by sealed bids, and then the county would issue a quitclaim deed to the successful bidder. So is there a motion to authorize staff to advertise the property in question for sale by sealed bid?
Make a motion that we advertise the property in question for sale by sealed bid.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wells has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to authorize staff to advertise the property in question for sale by sealed bid, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and staff is authorized to advertise the property for sale by sealed bid, and then after the appropriate time, that would come back before us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 5B, Planning and Zoning Board Appointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission has a vacancy on District One of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've held out advertisements for longer than 30 days, so it's time for the board to consider an appointment for this position. We've received several applications, and Commissioners have had the opportunity to review those. On behalf of the board, thank you to each person who volunteered to apply or applied. To clarify, our ordinance that established Planning and Zoning Commission specifies there are five members. Four of the members are appointed, one from each Commissioner District, and then one at-large member. Since I came on the board in 2017, this practice has never been followed as far as district appointments, and I think that's because no one knew that was a requirement, at least for those serving on the board. Am I correct? I don't remember us ever considering where someone lived. We were grateful for applications, and we picked someone and appointed them. But we have been earlier this year, we were made aware of that requirement, and we've all received a copy of the ordinance and had a chance to review that. So going forward, we are going to follow that requirement. When a vacancy comes up, we're going to make appointments by district so that over time, the composition of Planning and Zoning will reflect what the ordinance requires and will correct that. So this time, board is there a motion to appoint someone to the District One vacancy of the Planning and Zoning Commission? The term is a five-year term, and it will extend from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2027.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Josh Cave as the Planning and Zoning Representative for District One.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wells has made the motion to appoint Josh Cave to the District One vacancy on Planning and Zoning with a term that starts July 1st, 2022 and ends June 30th, 2027. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Franklin is second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to appoint Josh Cave to the Planning and Zoning Commission as the District One appointee, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and Josh Cave is appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission as the District One appointee. The minutes will reflect that Mr. Cave's term will begin July 1st, 2022 and end June 30th, 2027. Mr. Turner, you guys will let him know and get him set up. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 5E, the GMRC, the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission Appointment. One of the elected members on the board has to serve on the Georgia Mountains Regional Commission Council to represent Franklin County. By convention, that's usually the chairman, and I am currently on the council. I intend to, as I announced before, resign as chairman on July 31st, 2022, so we need to vote to appoint one of you Commissioners as the council member to replace me. Commissioner Franklin has volunteered to serve in this position, so is there a motion to appoint Commissioner Franklin to serve on the GMRC Council as the representative for Franklin County?
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Franklin to the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission Appointment for Franklin County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Westers made the motion to appoint Commissioner Franklin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to appoint Commissioner Franklin to the GMRC Council, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry three to zero. And Commissioner Franklin, you're extending. Okay. Okay, so three to zero, and Commissioner Franklin is appointed to GMRC Council, and Mr. Turner, if you'll notify Heather Feldman of the change. The next item on the agenda is the COPS Grant Contract. Franklin County is requesting the assistance of the GMRC to prepare a U.S. Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Programs Grant, or COPS for short. This grant money would fund two additional full-time law enforcement positions in the county. The purpose of the grant is to help law enforcement agencies hire personnel in order to implement community policing activities and programs. So Franklin County is requesting $247,884.39. This represents 75% of the cost of those two new employees. And then, according to the rules of the grant, Franklin County would have to supply the other 25%, which comes out to be $83,207.68. And this money would be designated to hire two new sworn officers. So Mr. Turner has been working with the Sheriff's Department and GMRC, and what we need to do tonight is consider an agreement with GMRC to write this and submit this grant application for us, and that cost is $2,000. So, Mr. Turner, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think it's a pretty good trade-off for what we have to put into it.
What's the, how, is this a new grant, or is this something that's given every year? What are our chances of?
I think our chances are pretty good of that. I think we have a pretty strong case of the need. From that, I would like our chances to that, I'd probably say 70% of, as far as that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Turner? All right. Is there a motion to approve the grant application agreement with GMRC for the COPS grant?
I'll make the motion to approve the funding for the COPS grant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster's made the motion to approve the grant application agreement with GMRC, and again, that's at a cost of $2,000. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Westers, second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the grant application agreement with GMRC for the COPS grant, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero, and the grant application agreement is approved. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Airport Authority, and I believe Chairman Eddie Addison is here with us tonight. He's going to update the board on the current fiscal condition of Airport Authority. Just to clarify for the public, the Franklin and Hart County recently commissioned a forensic audit of Airport Authority for the years covering 2012 to 2018. This is prior to when Mr. Addison became chairman, came on the board. This report was submitted to the GBI, and the county opted not to discuss that forensic audit until the GBI has weighed in on it. So we just want to avoid any confusion. Mr. Addison was not on the Airport Authority during that time period that was audited. He's here to bring us up to speed with where we are now. So, thank you, Mr. Addison.
Thank you, and on behalf of the Airport Authority, I want to thank Franklin County for being a very transparent government. We've got to see it up close and personal. And we've got some members from the Authority here tonight, I want to introduce them. We've got Mike Ward, who is our vice chairman. Y'all all know Mike, I'm sure. Kevin McCrane is our secretary and treasurer. Mark Ward, Mark Ward, Mark Brown, and you look like the one coming in. Mark Brown is the airport manager. We have Woody McFarland, he is a Franklin County appointee. Missing tonight is Bo Rowland, who is a Franklin County appointee, and Johnny Cox, who is a new Franklin County IBA appointee. Couple of things we want to discuss tonight, we just want to kind of bring you up to speed. We just had our annual audit, and I try to do this every year, to bring in and bring you up to speed on the numbers. We're going to go through this pretty quick. You know, the airport is physically healthy, amazingly healthy. We've got about $153,000 in our bank account. If we need to buy fuel today, we can do it. And y'all know this airport has struggled financially. You've all have been very, you've seen the numbers, you know where we were. The numbers be available to you to let you know where we are today. And there's been some notables, you know? We've got this parallel taxiway done, it's on a 15-year depreciation plan. Mark Brown, we started a new something plan. If you remember, fuel something was a big issue because we were going through about, there were 60 gallons a month of each fuel in waste. And, Mark, you want to tell a little bit about what we've done here?
The new system we have now, we have, we should be able to pump, should have to pump two gallons, two and a half gallons a day. Can't put it back in the system. Since we have this new system, it can drain off the bad, pump it back into the tanks, and that's probably a quart a day is the weight, or it was, two gallons at best.
And the price of fuel today, that's on. So we've cut out essentially 120 gallons of waste to recycling fuel, so that's good. The other thing we've done is we've upgraded our software, which manages our inventory, and until we get very comfortable with that, we've started a program, the first ever month, where we're sticking the inventory, then we're checking our Delta inventory to make sure everything matters up at the end of the month. Where are we financially? You know where we are physically, financially, where we want to grow with our capital improvement plan? We need hangers. We need hangers to generate revenue. That's our revenue source. And until we have that, we're going to continue to just keep plugging along where we are. Of course, we're doing pretty good, but we've got this in a capital improvement plan for 2024. We've given that bank, been at the airport, there is a big bank on the backside that we've given that to GDOT to remove the dirt, to get the land cleared, where hopefully all we'll have to do is an apron expansion and update there to begin the hangers. The feds and GDOT will not provide hangers, and a grant, we'll have to buy those separately, but the prep work is a lot of money as well through the concrete and the asphalt. So that's kind of where we're headed. Any questions on where we are financially?
As far as the current audit, I mean, were you discussing 2021 as well tonight?
This is 2021.
So everything?
2020's audit, we can't really get through it because we're missing some records. Some of the records have, they haven't been available to us, and maybe we'll talk about that a little bit. But we're in the middle of a single-point audit. When you have $750 a year in grants, and it's in a current year, the GDOT and FAA make you do a single-point audit, that's a $10,000 audit. That one's going to hit our pocketbook pretty hard. The project is, this is a phase-two project, the gift that just keeps giving. If you remember when you're begging for money, about 18 or 19 months ago, trying to get this paid. Mike did page you, man.
That's our, I'm sorry, that's our alarm. They're trying to set it.
Mike's on the fire grid.
Yeah, ignore that, please, sorry. I apologize.
So we've hired Birch Croons out of Hartwell to do this. GDOT had five approved vendors, and the one in Hartwell seemed to be good for us. Rousen was one. Couple of others. Kevin, you remember the other three? So we went with a group in Hartwell, they seemed to be very favorable for what we're doing. That audit is in progress now, and it's just over the phase-two and phase-one taxiways. We've got a runway lighting grant. I don't know if you guys remember, in phase-two, it was to pave the runway, and then we had lighting. And we couldn't afford at that time the local share to do everything. Originally, phase-two was going to be 100% paid by the federal government, but because the former chairman didn't do an extension on the contract negotiations, it kicked it back into a rebid. And all the parties bid a couple of times, but the surveying that the FAA and GDOT did didn't come up to where they needed to be. So they rebid it again, and the only different party there was ER Snail. The rest of the vendors participated. And there was a $1.0 million difference, which kicked in a huge local share, and we just couldn't afford it. If y'all remember, we actually got two grants, one from the Hart County IBA and one from the Franklin County IBA, to get us out of that fiasco that we were in. And all of that has been squared away, and we can't thank both IBAs enough for what they did for us. Very helpful, and we were told point-blank by GDOT if we didn't go through with that portion of that grant, that we wouldn't be getting any more grants. So we were kind of held, they had a gun in our head. Where we are now, we're awarded, the new phase-two is $418,500 for the lighting. The local share is going to be $20,900 and a quarter. So we've got that money, but we do have an issue. Back when GDOT had first said they were going to award us the business, Kroy Engineering, it was our engineering firm, went ahead and went through with the engineering part, and it's about $19,000. And we thought we were totally finished with phase-two. For those of you who had the opportunity to attend the meetings that we had with GDOT and FAA and Kroy, we all felt we were satisfied. Well, they hit us with this invoice, and because we don't have our records, we don't know if the Airport Authority at that time actually voted for them to go ahead and complete that or start that engineering. So we really need those records. And I kind of hearing the grapevine that those records don't exist anymore, is that true?
I'm not aware. I don't know. I can't answer that. I don't have any knowledge of it.
It wasn't under your roof, you know? It was under your previous administration's roof, and I talked to Elaine, and Elaine tells us that she was investigated by GBI over the destruction of the records, the eight boxes. And I guess they conducted their investigation and found maybe Elaine wasn't the culprit. But it seems to me that someone, if they were involved, that means that someone really thinks those records were destroyed. Well, I think we need to discover, or we need to look where these records are. I mean, were they destroyed in the county's purview?
What was, now, what was the scope of the records?
They were, they were our, if you'll take a look, when we first started, the county was providing, we were doing shared services, you guys were providing $3,500 worth of shared services to the airport, I think that's the right number, isn't it? And then you were taking care of our county as a board. Well, as we went through and discovered things, the county elected not to go forward with that, and we hired Brian Nestor's firm, I think we paid them $925 a year, which really a good deal for us, you know? Paid them $925 a year to take on that service, but we weren't allowed to have our records back. The previous administration thought the Airport Authority fell into the county's purview, and you know we're kind of sovereign in both counties. And we really need those records so we can determine if in fact we owe this money.
Go ahead, Mark. Real quick, I feel like the assumption is that the records were with us. And I can't speak to that because you said, again, this is...
Yeah, you wouldn't.
There's also a lot of records over the years that either weren't taken by the Airport Authority prior to you. There's not any chance that y'all had those records and they were missing on y'all's end?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that...
Or not even taken, or, you know, I mean, because...
During those times...
Because I remember the headache of, you know, the transition and people leaving and you coming on and all that, and quite frankly, there was a lot of missing documentation.
You're absolutely right.
I thought with that final batch, I think, was it last fall, that that was the final batch that we had of airport, you know, that we copied and gave to you guys. I didn't know there were any others. But now, that's not saying a lot because I...
Yeah, I asked Elaine, Elaine, if she would kind of verify what we're saying. I mean, she says that she was interviewed by the GBI after her departure, right, Elaine? And after your departure is when they said that you destroyed the documents, right? So that's...
Is there any kind of internal review we can do to see if there's any other documents we might have? I don't...
Something we've seen, there's probably not really anything else.
And I understand there was a Jimmy Lee Coy who came and went down in the basement with the former county manager?
I don't know.
And looked through the shredder. I don't know the whole story, but I don't know if they wind up in Senator, Senator over in 47's district or not, but we really need those to let us know what we owe.
I have a feeling that...
They don't exist?
They don't exist.
I think you're right. Certainly don't.
So I don't know.
So now I'm asking for suggestion, how do we deal with this invoice? Because I've worn these guys out.
So the issue is that you don't know if, that they've been paid or...
They declared that they haven't been paid. GDOT declares that before we got in, before I was on the Authority in 2019, that they actually included that in a payout, but they can't prove it to us.
Yeah.[1773.83]
And Coy declares that it was. So what we wanted to do is look at the, at the, at the, uh, minutes to see if it was approved, approved by the Airport Authority.
What about bank, uh, statements?
They, that was kind of.
Seems like that would show whether it's paid or not.
Yeah, that, the banking was, you know, I don't know if you, um, the Rousen, the twenty thirteen general document, they did, says it was a mess.
But that, who is the bank that has those, your accounts?
Today it's Pinnacle.
So who was it then?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Because we don't have the banking record.
I don't know if they would keep it that long, but maybe that would be the place to start.
Elaine, when you were doing it, did Pinnacle always do have the banking account? Do you, when did they start scanning the documents? When we, when we inquired with them, the records are pretty shoddy. They were upfront, we were trying to figure out where the money is going.
I think the records have been, been a huge question.
You probably have a, have a better scope on the banking record than we do from the due diligence you all conducted together with Hart County. You know they ain't there. Records are, and the finances are even worse.
Do y'all have a, have, have y'all implemented a policy going forward, like a records retention policy?
You know what we do? Yes, absolutely, we do. We keep the seven-year policy. But what, what we're doing is we've hired the CPA firm. All the records go to the CPA. And then they put, they, they image them and keep them, uh, on their cloud.
That including minutes and that kind of thing?
The minutes are all put on your website, along with Hart County website, and we keep them, we keep, we have them three places, your website, Hart County website and our website.
Do y'all keep like a hard copy stored?
Yes.
Yes. Kevin can answer that better. Kevin.
So seven years going, going forward, you'll keep all your records seven years?
That's staying there.
Right. Okay, is that, that was a, that has been a huge issue in the past. I, I can't personally answer your questions about, because, because number one, I don't know, I don't know precisely what records those would be. I haven't seen them and so I don't know what they, I, I wouldn't recognize them if they were in a box in front of it. I don't think.
I, I think that we may, we would like to request an investigation to see if those records were destroyed. I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I mean, this group, you know, it seems like this council loves GBI investigation, but it seems like that's something that we need to get going here as a GBI investigation. If someone destroyed those records intentionally.
Yeah, I.
We need to take.
Maybe first we can, we can, we can look again, you know, locally and see. I, I don't.
There was eight boxes when we got the last bit from Beth. And I think, Mike, you came and.
And then we had one more, right?
Too good for you, right?
I was supposed to pick up two boxes, but it had a list of about, about six hundred documents that I was supposed to sign out on. And she wanted me to go through each of the boxes and look at it. I said, I don't have time for it. And I haven't seen no box sent.
Okay.
Let, let's do this. Let, let us try to work together as a team and see if we can find it.
We, we'll look too internally. I, I just, to my knowledge, that last box we had was all we had, but, uh, so, so I don't know, but we'll see what we can figure out.
They would have hosted an investigation had that been all the boxes that you had.
Yeah.
You following?
But if they, if they were, if they were at some point destroyed, I, I don't know how you trace that back. Because most of us.
They might be good at their job.
Yeah, most of us weren't here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, I think it's something we need to investigate or have investigated. Because those belong to the Airport Authority. We really need them.
Yeah, I've got a feeling that they don't.
I got a feeling this, here in the basement, because that's where I said the shredder was.
Yeah.
And they only had two people went up down those stairs from what I understand. Help us, please, if you will. That's all I'm asking you to do, help us, because we need some help here. We're, we're, we're gonna be forced to pay this nineteen thousand dollars.
And that's to, that nineteen thousand is to.
Coy Engineering.
Coy Engineering, okay.
And it was, it was during the first funding that didn't take place. Remember, I told you at the beginning, that was supposed to have been a hundred percent.
In what time, what was the date on that?
It would have been in the twenty seventeen range when it was probably approved in the CIP. I expect the contract was executed in eighteen.
Do y'all have your minutes from that period at all? So they're not?
No, we don't. The minutes are very sketchy. And, and very brief, one of the things I've found is, is brevity seems to allow for, for clusters to happen.
That's probably true. All right, we'll see, we'll see what we can do.
Y'all please listen. Thank you for allowing us.
We appreciate you coming and talking to us. We, we're glad to hear that finally that the Airport Authority is, is getting on firm footing.
Well, we were waiting for a while. We thought it was gonna go out the door a couple of times and I think y'all did too. Thank you for your help.
All right, thank you.
Good luck on you, Texan. And Ryan, how's your move coming?
It's a daily progress.
We're all gonna be at your table by Thanksgiving, so be ready for us.
I'm good.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next agenda item is H. This is the UGA Cooperative Extension Contract. This is something that we renew annually. Uh, and I, everybody's had a chance to hopefully look at this. Uh, the total salary and benefits that Franklin County would pay are thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. That's correct, Mr. Turner?
That's right.
Okay, and so this is the, uh, this is the contract that we, we do each year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we, and basically the county pays a portion of the salaries of extension personnel, so Raymond Fitzpatrick and some of his staff, correct? And that's what this goes for. Okay, anybody have questions about that?
I don't have a question about the contract, but will we ever work out something to get him some kind of vehicle photograph? I know, I think we, we're gonna talk with UGA about maybe partnering.
So, so it'll have to happen in the next fiscal year to, to still have a certain amount of vehicles planned that were in the current system.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension Contract?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension Contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. There we go. Well, that's something you. Okay, Commissioners, let's get back on track. Commissioners, hold on, guys. Mr. Wells has seconded the motion to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension Contract. Uh, any discussion?
I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick does a really good job in, in our county with our farmers and everyone.
Okay, any other? All in favor of the motion to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension Contract signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and the contract is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Indigent Defense Agreement, and this is something that we approve annually. Uh, and it's, uh, for the Northern Judicial Circuit. Each county in the circuit pays a certain amount. Uh, and this year, let me turn in the contract. This year Franklin County's portion, uh, for the Indigent Defense will be one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Uh, so, Mr. Turner, do you have anything else to add to that? Or do you guys have questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the Indigent Defense Agreement?
I can motion that we approve the, uh, Indigent Defense Agreement.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Wells has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the Indigent Defense Agreement signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and the Indigent Defense Agreement contract is approved. And I think that I skipped over the COPS Grant.
We did that.
Did we? Oh, that's right, we did. I had it sitting in front of me like so much time has passed. I thought I had missed, overlooked it. I'm sorry, I apologize. The next item on the agenda are announcements. Mr. Turner, do you have anything?
No, nothing.
Okay, our next regular board meeting is gonna be Monday, July the eleventh. This is a change. Normally we meet on the first Monday of the month, but next Monday is the fourth of July, so we pushed our July regular board meeting back to Ju, uh, July the eleventh. And we will also have a, uh, public hearing on that date. So the public hearing will start at five-thirty with a regular meeting to follow either at six or at the conclusion of the regular meeting. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna officially announce my intention to resign on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I gave a statement to that effect last month. My employer's been facing some increasingly difficult health issues to the point that I can't really stay away from work long enough to carry out my duties as chairman. Uh, I, I had loved serving as chairman and as commissioner earlier before that and I regret that it had to come to the point that I had to resign. Uh, this was not foreseeable. It's something that's developed in the last year. But it appears to escalate and there didn't really appear to be any resolution in the long term. Uh, and so I don't think it's possible for me to continue to devote the attention to being chairman that's required and that's fair to the county. So, uh, I just want to say I've enjoyed serving with this board and with the prior board, which is really, is only, that's most of us. Uh, uh, I've enjoyed working with the citizens too. I appreciate the trust that the citizens of Franklin County put in me. And I've done this to the absolute best of my ability and I, I hope that, um, and I, and I, I feel confident that you guys will continue and do great things. The county is on the right track. We've had a lot on our plate in the last two years and we just, that's always gonna be the case. When it's come up and you have to deal with it, one issue after another. But I've been honored to serve with you and I wish all of you and the county the best. Uh, so, we'll get over announcements. Commissioner Franklin, do you have anything?
Next.
Commissioner Foster?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Wells, Mr. Wester?
Uh, just want to say thank you for your service. Uh, being chairman is not an easy job. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done. It's been an honor to serve with you up here.
You're welcome. I agree. It's been an honor to serve with you guys and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Uh, and I wish there was a way that I didn't have to resign, but I've, I've tried to work that out over the last few months and it's just not possible. Uh, so the last day will be July thirty-first and the end of July. At this time, Commissioners, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of a motion to adjourn signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry four to zero and we stand adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.